Are they ready, Julie? Okay. So, we are going to reopen the portion of today's planning commission, untelevised but recorded, on training, so-called training-related items with staff. Mr. Cotto.
Yay. Okay. So, this is the second time we're doing this this year. The first time was something like January 23rd. And as we did, well, we're going to follow the same basic format, which is completely informal. And, you know, the idea is, we have a couple of topics. I have four picked out. I don't think we'll get to them all today. But we'll start out on each of these and get as far as we get, and then we'll tell you what we know. You'll ask questions. We'll go back and forth until you don't have any more questions. How's that sound? Okay, good. So, let's start with...
And, Mr. Cotto, maybe I could just mention, I would suggest to make the most of our time together, to make it very interactive, and I don't feel a need to wait and call on. Mr. Soif, not that we want a free-for-all, but I don't think we'll have a free-for-all on this. Does that work for everybody, just to kind of jump in?
Works for me.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So, the four items that we might get to, we'll at least get to one of them: development restrictions, specific plans, ZIRs, and mitigation banking. So, let's start out with development restrictions. So, a lot of, we put development restrictions on lots, basically on hillside lots, right? We have a slope density ordinance that says you have to have a, quite a large, you know, up to triple the size of the normal underlying base zoning. For example, if you have an A1 zone with a one-acre lot size, if you have a slope that's over 30%, the minimum lot size is three acres. That's the way that works. And a lot of times, those great portions of those lots are steep slopes. And when we see subdivisions or developments come through with steep slopes, we identify a development envelope or a building envelope, we call them different things. And then, a lot, and most times, we restrict development on the vast portion of the lot, right? So that, so that major hillsides can't be developed. And we've done this a number of different ways over the years. When I, you know, probably up until about the mid-'90s or so, we would put a dedication requirement on the land, so that the land, as a condition of approval, the steep slopes would have to be dedicated to the city. They became, they became city property, really. And so, we did that for a number of years, and then it was pointed out to us, or somehow, I don't know exactly how this came about, I was, I was a planning or traffic tech at the time, assistant planner. Anyway, that, once this land became dedicated to the city, the city was responsible for its maintenance. And that was quite a burden on the city. And the city decided that, you know, through a public process, I imagine, decided that we didn't want to do that anymore. We didn't want to take possession of this land and become responsible for it. We just didn't want any development put on it. So, we changed the way we do things to the way we do it even to this day. We simply restrict development on those, on those portions. We put a condition on approval, sorry, we put a condition of approval on the project that says you may not develop on this portion of the land, and it's identified on the tentative map or on the site plan, that sort of thing, or through, you know, there are all kinds of different ways to describe it. But we describe an area of land and say, you are either not allowed to do anything, or maybe you're limited to what you could do in the area. You know, sometimes there'll be a building envelope, there'll be a development, you know, you can build something like a building, there'll be a development envelope that you could have a patio or, you know, lawn, and then, you know, beyond that, it has to be native, and you can't touch anything, right? There's different ways to do that, depending on what the sensitive, what the sensitive issue is, whether it's a biological, biological thing, or a steep slopes thing. So, that's what we do today, as far as development restrictions go, and that's quite a change from the way, the way it used to be. Now, something that's, that was, something that we've talked about, in fact, we put a condition on, sort of, for something called a conservation easement. I don't know if you were around for the Viverde project, but on the Viverde project, there was something like, back in the, I don't know, back in the '80s, there was a conditional use permit, and it required about four or five acres to be, to remain, it was supposed to be development restricted, and I think there was supposed to be a recorded document that somehow put some conditions on that, that was never recorded at the time. And during the more recent Viverde project, Viverde was saying they would add another five acres or so to make it a total of nine acres, that would be, of oak woodland that would be protected. And this time, in order to try to ensure that that protection happens, the commission, and it might have been at the request of a neighbor, I can't remember, or the idea of a neighbor, to put on a, or at least to put on a condition that the land be offered out for five years to be, for a conservation easement. And there was some confusion at the time, and there probably still is, like, what is a conservation easement? And how do they work? So, conservation easement, as I understand it, because we've never, I don't think we've ever had one in the city, this one still is just an offer out there for somebody to take. But it's a way to get a third party involved, usually it's a nonprofit, something like the Land Trust of Santa Barbara County, to manage the, manage the restricted area, right? The conserved area. And I think they might do this more in the county, and maybe, June, you would have something to add to this, because, like I said, we don't have personal experience with it here. But in any case, the way that I understand that this works is, you get some, you know, you offer out this land, and it's usually a, quite a large piece of land, nine acres is pretty small for a conservation easement, but you offer this out to a nonprofit to, to take, and they essentially become responsible for maintenance of the land, and ensuring that it stays in its pristine condition. When I talked to a friend of mine who's, who was a pro bono attorney for the Land Trust, you know, he was telling me that, you know, nine acres, nobody really wants to take one that's that small. And the way it works is, they usually require whoever is entering into it with them to give them a lump sum of money, you know, like a hundred thousand dollars or so, as an endowment, and then, basically, the interest off that endowment pays for the annual reporting, you know, reporting out of the, of the conservation easement, and making sure that it happens, that it's conserved, the way it's supposed to be conserved. So, for the Viverde, for the Viverde project, we put a, we put a condition that said, for five years, it has to be offered out to the, out to the community for, for a nonprofit agency to enter into a conservation easement. And if no, if no entity takes them, takes them up on that offer, then after five years, it expires. There still is a development restriction on there, because that's, we put that on everything. So, you still, they still can't develop that oak woodland, but it would no longer, after five years, there wouldn't be a requirement to keep offering that conservation easement. Anyway, that's, that's about all, that's all about, I know about conservation easements, and the development restrictions, you know, any questions you have about that, or any additional knowledge that you may have about what, how they handle them in the county, that would be great.
In the, a lot of the hillside areas here, before this policy for slope density was instituted, there were a lot of lots created that do not meet the slope density criteria.
Oh, yeah.
And how does that apply when some of those in the future want to change their use, do something different, build a different house, or do a lot line adjustment, or, you know, anything like that? How does the new slope density impact their ability to do those things?
It doesn't. If we're talking about existing lot, existing development, or even a vacant lot that, that is existing and is legal, if they don't meet the standard, they just don't meet the standard. So, it's a lot. And even on, even in downtown, where it's flat, where there is no slope density, if you have a 7,500 square foot lot size, but you only have 4,000 square feet, we still allow you to develop on it. You may need to get modifications, because the setback takes up a whole, a much bigger portion of your lot than they would normally, you know, with a, with a bigger lot. But we don't, we don't, we don't consider it a non-conforming lot where you're not allowed to add, or...
So, even something that doesn't involve development, per se, like a lot line adjustment, could go forward with...
The lot line adjustment, you know, subdivision or a lot line adjustment must comply with both the general plan as well as the zoning ordinance. So, that is someplace where, if you're altering a lot, then you have to comply with the slope density ordinance. It would kick in...
In that case, you couldn't do that.
Right. They couldn't change that lot without complying with the slope density ordinance. They'd have to get land, this happened up on Harbor, Harborview...
Harbor Hills, right.
Harbor Hills, where, you know, they, they wanted to reconfigure the shape of the lot. They had some, some portion that could be conforming, some portion that couldn't be conforming, and the answer back to them was, come back to us when you have enough lot area to satisfy the slope density ordinance, or come back to us with a number, a smaller number of lots, merge some of your lots, because there were seven non-conforming lots, or lots that were non-conforming under today's standards. And they wanted, initially, they came in saying, hey, we've got seven lots. We said, no, you have seven Rogers track lots. Those aren't compliant. And so, it's, it's moved through the process, I'm not even sure where that application is anymore in the process, but one of the, you know, one of the responses to that was, merge some of these lots together, get enough lot area to conform to the slope density ordinance, and then let's talk about how you're going to develop it.
All right. Now, that was, that was a special situation, because they were Roger tracks, Rogers track lots, and there was some dispute, I guess, about their legality. But if, let's say, like a Riviera lot, you know, any, any of the houses that are up there that are developed in a lot, they wanted to come in for a lot line adjustment, so that someone could have a bigger yard, or something like that. We would, we would, we would bring that through, but ask for a lot, a lot area modification. That would, they would be, that would be a request that we would require them to come forward with, because that's the only way you can comply with the zoning ordinance today.
So, it wouldn't preclude them, they would just have to get approval for a lot area modification of, under the slope density?
In addition to the, in addition to the lot line adjustment, yeah. If they were doing a subdivision, it'd be a different story. Then, then we would, then we would almost certainly require it to meet the minimum, the minimum lot size, you know, even the slope density increased lot size.
And then, you know, a downtown example of this is the, the Ablet's home.
Right.
You know, it's in, I think it's CM Zone, is it CM or C2?
Yeah.
CM. CM Zone, there's no minimum lot size for that zone. It, it was a 400-square-foot lot, and they built a thousand-square-foot home on a 400-square-foot lot. It had zero lot lines, it had zero setbacks, the garage is substandard, it's right behind a bar. But they have their home downtown, and it's bigger than the boat that they were living on.
And that had a lot of mods, that had setback mods, parking mods, you know?
The development, or designated buildable area on a hillside, I remember not too long ago, we had one somewhere up on the hills here, where we were changing the location of the buildable part, so they could move a garage, or something like...
Yeah, that's right. That was on Gibraltar.
Gibraltar, yeah.
Can we go back to Valverde for a moment?
Sure.
The, as I recall, just about everybody on the planning commission was concerned about the, the open space that hadn't been recorded before, and then, you know, was added to, and has, with this, I don't remember hearing about this condition, that it'd be for five years, be offered. Assuming no nonprofit takes it, then what happens?
Then, the offer goes away, but as part of the recorded conditions of approval, which have been recorded already, because that's required before they pull their building permits, there is something, a condition that says the development on this nine-point-whatever acre piece of oak woodlands is restricted, and you may not develop on it, so...
And, but I assume they, they're still responsible for maintenance?
Yes, yes. It's a development restriction, they're responsible, they, it's just that the added layer of protection that was, that could be afforded through the conservation easement isn't there. There's still the basic level that, that we put on everything.
The way I, the distinction I'd highlight for the commission is that the development restriction is more in the negative. It tells the property owner, you cannot do this, or you cannot do these kinds of things in this area. The, the conservation easement is more in a positive sense. It is, it, an easement, and its most fundamental level, is the right to use somebody else's property. So, to have a conservation easement, what, what it really is doing is saying to the property owner, you shall offer this opportunity to interested parties, and if you find one, they would be able to come onto your property and do these affirmative things, presumably, in the case of, in this example, they would take care of the oak woodland, and study the oak woodland, and do things towards a, more of a conservation, more of an active conservation, as opposed to simply saying to the property owner, don't do any harm to the oak woodland. Because the development restriction doesn't say that they have to maintain the oak trees, keep them from dying, keep them from, you know, it just says, you can't construct. And so, that's, that's kind of the distinction I see between these two things, is that development restrictions say, do no, and don't do certain things. A conservation easement is a more positive document, where some other party is getting the right to do something on that property.
During the period of time when the city was requiring the parts of lots that were development restricted to go to the ownership of the city, do we still have ownership of some of those lots that were required, the cities required to maintain?
We do.
We do.
Yeah. And an example, coincidentally, in that neighborhood, the condominiums that are developed on the west side of Cañadales Omegas, there, it winds along the Arroyo Borough Creek. And what they did in that particular project, is they actually dedicated a strip of land between the creek and the developed area, and, I mean, I don't know, I wasn't around then, literally. But, they, they, you know, in some cases, they kind of refer to it as a part, as an opportunity for a park, in other places, it's just, you know, it's just dedicated, and it's, it goes to the city. And in that case, this, that particular example highlights some of the problems of taking a, actual dedication of that land, is that that land is, is sloughing off and falling into the creek. And the owners, the current owners of that condominium project are saying, city, do something about it. Stop the creek from taking your, taking the city land. They essentially want to use the city land now, the land that was dedicated to the city, as their defensive zone to protect their condominiums. The problem with that request is, as soon as the city touches that land, you know, alters that land from its natural state, cities and counties have immunities under state law for land that they, that is owned by the city, that is left in its natural state. So, we have an immunity if we don't do anything. If we do anything to that property, all of a sudden, downstream property owners, upstream property owners, say, if they have a problem with the stream, they're going to say, yes, city, you contributed, or you, you exacerbated our problem with this creek. So, at this point, the, the approach to that situation is that this is a common enemy to all of us. It's a, you know, the, the city is suffering in the same way that, that, so far, the condominium owners have not suffered, but we both are dealing with the same problem.
Do we have any wooded areas in the high fire zone that the city has to go in and clean up?
You know what he's...
That's, that's a perennial problem, to get owners to clean them up. I just wonder if some of the properties that aren't getting cleaned up actually are the responsibility of the city.
You know, I think we do, but I can't, I can't say for sure, and I certainly couldn't give you any specifics.
Yeah. Who maintains that? Who manages those? Is there somebody that, one department in the city that oversees those kind of ownership issues?
If, well, the, certainly if the city had land that needed to be managed, and more likely than not, would be managed as part of the wildland fire assessment program.
So, that would be fire department would oversee it?
Fire department generally manages those, that kind of, of a land management, as far as the, the limbing up or removal of the underbrush as, as a fire hazard.
I didn't realize that we had properties like that, that were city responsibility.
The, the water resources has a lot of hillside property. It, you know, and I think it was acquired at various times as, you know, as probably somehow thinking, hey, let's have another Gibraltar tunnel, or whatever. And so, there are fairly large swaths of, of land that are, that is owned by the city. I don't know how actively it's managed, and in some cases, I think access to it would be extremely difficult.
I'll do a little check-in to see, and get back, I have it on my, my list of questions.
And I, I agree. And in my experience, a lot of jurisdictions used to, in the olden days, you know, actually take the properties and take ownership of them, and most jurisdictions shy away from doing that anymore, partly because there are some of these tools that I don't think were in place and available at the time that this was done, or at least fine-tuned enough to be used and effective. The development envelopes and the development restriction areas and the conservation easements, another way of looking at it is a degree of permanency, because it goes all the way from a development envelope, say, on a land, or a coastal development permit, that lives with that development project only, and not with the lot, or the parcel necessarily, but it's attached to that development proposal. And then, there's a subdivision or a lot line adjustment, which is a little more permanent, because it's a recorded document with entitlements to land, and then, the development envelope on that has a higher degree of permanency. And then, you go all the way to a conservation easement, which is basically in perpetuity. But my understanding, in the way that I have been involved in conservation easements in the past, the interpretation has been that a conservation easement needs to be offered by the owner. And they're usually very welcomed if they protect sensitive resources by the agency. But the owner not only then carries it forward, and usually gives it to a third party to manage and retain, but also they get some very significant, important tax breaks by doing that. And it's really important that if an owner seems to be amenable to an idea like that in offering it, that he be allowed to take advantage of those tax breaks, by being careful in the way that you, you know, describe them. But they can be a really effective tool. On all of these, though, I would caution, I don't know if you've had this experience before or not, but I have, where sometimes in the quest to preserve the open space, the slope, the biology, you review the boundaries of what's best for that parcel to protect that. But oftentimes, what's neglected is the access or the utilities to that area. Once it's set in place, you want to make sure that it's flexible enough, so that the use of the property can be developed without cutting off important access points or utility lines, because once you put it in place, you know, if it's outside that line, then it's arguable whether they can even design a driveway to it, if it wasn't accommodated. So, it's important to work on them carefully when, when you do it. And I know you mentioned, Danny, that you had, your examples were the slope density and biology. I would hope that you also intended in there issues such as geology, bluff-retreat areas, which I brought up once before, and those are really good areas to consider, things like development envelopes and exclusion areas, and also in cases where you might have landslide potential, or that sort of geology sort of problem, too, I think is another really good reason to, to employ those kinds of tools.
Mentioning landslides, I was curious, I know the city told initially after the T-Fire, a certain number of lots simply couldn't be built on, and then there were some where the city retreated on that, and they were allowed. Did we end up with any where there was no development allowed?
I don't know if, I, well, one, the, there were several lots that we told the property owners they could not rebuild, and there was a group of them, I think four or five property owners who sued the city, and ultimately, they prevailed. They, they were awarded damages, and the court ordered the city to amend our, our Canajo slide ordinance in such a way to allow those property owners the opportunity, should they wish, to, to submit for building permits. So, some of those that we did say no to have prevailed and can move forward if they wish. Primarily, the reason, or the rationale behind the judge's, judge's decision in that case was that, that the evidence before the city, and particularly the, the history since the time that we adopted the ordinance, belied the concern that, that underlied that ordinance, in the sense that rebuilding homes in that area would potentially cause a landslide that, and, or exacerbate the, the risk for it. And the court looked, you know, looked back at the history, and then, and also the evidence at the time, and did not agree with the city in its conclusion that rebuilding, or in this case, rebuilding homes on those lots posed an imminent danger, and therefore, wasn't the outright ban on rebuilding was not justified.
In case anybody's wondering, I'm talking about Canao Road, that area, that big slide area, where there were several homes that were, over time, simply destroyed because the land slid away. And Canao Road, really, for quite a while, was, as far as I was concerned, I wouldn't use it for fear of scraping the bottom of my car. I think it's been somewhat repaired, because it has continued to slide and slump down there. But the city has put in some, some drains, some new storm drains, I believe, and other things to try to...
And they did repave that section of the road.
I think it's, hopefully, it's going to stay put.
I, I think the city also abandoned part of Elan Place to...
That's correct.
Because it was in the slide zone, they didn't want to have to keep fixing it?
That's correct.
And there's one property owner out there that is not happy about that?
That is correct, too.
Wasn't there also, wasn't the, either water or sewer lines that was put in, was a flexible sewer or water line, so that it could move with the soil?
Yeah. I don't think there's any argument that it's, it's not a challenged area for any kind of infrastructure. It really came down to, as far as the court was concerned, that to justify an outright ban on the, essentially, the, the only use for a residential parcel is to build a residence, that to have an outright ban of that beneficial use, the city really had to prove up an imminent danger, and, and kind of made that the standard, which was, that was, that kind of standard was recently announced in a court of appeal case out of the City of Palos Verdes, where in that case, again, City of Palos Verdes was experiencing landslides, and told a number of property owners, no, you cannot apply for, for building permits. The property owners came back and had geology reports suggesting that it was not an imminent danger, and in that case, the court of appeal down in Los Angeles, again, agreed, saying, yes, if, if the city, in order to have an outright ban, the government must prove an imminent danger in order for that public purpose behind, you know, to be served behind the, the ban.
And I guess a lot of it depends on how you define imminent?
Yeah. To make sure we understand that, so, that would mean, on a case-by-case basis, you could still require, say, a geologic report and determine the state of that property before you allow it to build, it's just that you can't do an area-wide ban?
It's, I would, I would separate the SEQA analysis versus a ban. I mean, SEQA, you know, in, in all of those cases, you would do a geologic analysis in order to determine a hazard, and the potential for a hazard, the, really what, what it comes down to, that you don't even have the opportunity to come in the door and apply, that kind of ban, really, the courts are saying, hey, you've got... That kind of ban, really, the courts are saying, hey, you've got SEQA to analyze the, the hazard analysis and put in whatever appropriate conditions to mitigate that hazard if you find one. But to say that you can't even submit a building permit application, city, you've got to be able to prove an imminent danger to the public as opposed to just, it's probably not a good idea.
That's all, that's all we have on that. If that's, if there are no more questions, we can move on to the next thing.
Let's move on.
The next thing is specific plans, and Ms. Brooke will lead us through that.
Okay, so, specific plans, much like the name alludes to, is, is a more specific plan for an area within the city. So you know, we have the general plan, and then within the boundaries of the city ruled by the general plan, there's properties zoned in a number of different ways. And oftentimes, when land is looked to be developed, the base zoning doesn't work for whatever constraints or unique situations that property might have on the specific plan. Or maybe it's a large tract of land, thousands of acres that, that someone's looking to develop, and they want to have some flexibility in how that's developed. And again, the base zoning doesn't allow that. So what a specific plan does is it, the way the government code calls it, is it's a systematic implementation of the general plan. So again, a more specific way to guide development in an area of a community. It can apply to a very large area, can be hundreds, thousands or so acres. It can also be a very small area. So there's no real limit to how large or small the area is that's subject to a specific plan. And it can also be very general, or it can have very specific development standards. Like some of the more recent ones we've seen come through the city, they've laid out development standards, very similar to what you would see in just a normal zone district of a community or of, of the city, with very specific setbacks for homes, open yards area for homes, you know. So it's really detailed out how this particular part of the community would be developed. Let's see. Specific plans are defined as a project under SEQA, so they go and, they undergo environmental review like any other action, project, discretionary action. They can be adopted by either resolution or ordinance. And I believe we have examples of both within our community. We have four, or, sorry, 10 specific plans in the city of Santa Barbara, four of which are actually codified, that are, you know, in the zoning ordinance, where we can, you know, turn to every day and look at the development restrictions of those specific plans. Then the other six are just either a city council resolution or an ordinance, and we, you know, they live alone, they're their own document that we refer to in some other fashion when people have questions about how to develop out in an already adopted specific plan. So, one thing to keep in mind when talking about specific plans is they're different from other terms that are similar, like area or community plans you might have heard of. Community plans are more, more often you see those in counties, like Santa Barbara County has several community plans because the county general plan is so large. There's obviously towns within the general plan that should have their own guiding, their own guidance for future development. So they'll have a community plan for Santiness Valley or Galita Valley. Specific plans are different in that it's, you really see those more because there's one particular development coming forward. I don't know of any examples in the city where we've adopted a specific plan not in conjunction with a development being proposed at the same time. So we're usually developing the specific plan at the same time as, as evaluating a development proposal. I don't think you have to do that. It just happens to be the way that we've formulated our 10 specific plans. Something also to keep in mind, because we have done that, and that's been the city's past practice, is that a specific plan may be moving along in conjunction with a development proposal, and it's written so that this particular proposal fits in with that and can be consistent with the general plan. The specific plan may be adopted, but then we never see the development actually come through. And so, that's fine. We've got the rules laid out for this particular part of town, given these development standards. Any other future developer would have to either come in and develop and propose an application that's consistent with that specific plan, or else ask for a revision to it.
Could you give us some, at least one example of that?
Okay.
Development didn't follow, come through, but we have now a specific?
Well, a recent example is the Veronica Meadows project. It's not to say it won't ever happen, but it's had some challenges along its way. But that, that is specific plan nine for the city. It is codified, it's municipal code chapter 2850. So it's in our code, talks about the intent of the specific plan, the different areas of that land and their intended uses. And that's actually a good example for a general discussion of what specific plans are used for is, that property, well, it was in the county, but had some rural and, and semi-urban zoning, I think, on it at the time. But, I mean, you're familiar with the property. It's next to a creek, it's got steep slopes, there's geology issues. So while portions of that property may have been appropriate for development, there are portions that are clearly not. And so the specific plan helped make sense of this very general zoning on the property. It said, this hillside, you can't have anything but open space there. This creek, this area is only going to be for walking paths and this sort of thing and very non-intensive uses. And then this chunk of this land can be used for housing development. And here's your setbacks and open yard requirements for the houses, and here's where your road should be. So it helped guide where the more and not so great areas of that land should be developed.
Is there a time expiration for our specific plans?
No, once it's adopted, it's adopted. They can be revised, but they, they become, well, in, in the cases where they're adopted as part into the zoning ordinance, they are part of the zoning ordinance, could continue on forever. The other ones, Scott, maybe you can help me here with, the ones adopted by resolution?
On Veronica Meadows, as an example, I still have a question, for example, Veronica Meadows. So a certain number of years, let's say, elapsed. And if the geology changes, which would impact the base, the decision basis for the specific plan, would a new applicant, let's say, a new development applicant, could they ask the city to revisit the specific plan based upon, let's say, geologic changes, biologic changes, something like that?
Specific plans are legislative actions of the city council. So whether it's adopting a resolution or, or adopting by ordinance, they are, they are a product of the city. I would suggest that in the example of Veronica Meadows, the city could come back someday and delete that specific plan, just repeal it. So, you know, it would basically, now, I wouldn't recommend that by itself because it would essentially create a white space as far as zoning is concerned. But we could replace it with something else and say, this is the new specific plan. It's, I mean, it's, it has the same function and performance as a zoning ordinance. And we, it's, you know, zoning ordinances are all legislative actions of the city council. There's no particular entitlement to a particular zone. You can, the city can come along and, as a legislative action, change zoning. Now, the existing uses that might be inconsistent with the new zoning would be entitled to be treated as legal non-conforming, presuming that they were legal uses prior to the rezone. But future development of that area would have to comply with the new zoning. So the same would, would apply to a specific plan. The council could, could initiate a specific plan on its own initiative. As Ms. Brooke mentioned, it doesn't happen. We haven't done it in the, in this community. We haven't used this tool in that manner. We typically start off with a developer proposing the development of a particular area, and then we use the tool of a specific plan to, to formalize that process and then anticipating possibly that the development may occur in phases, that the phases may maybe have extended periods of time between them, or that the project won't necessarily start for an extended period of time at all. And so it is, I, I mean, just sitting here, I was thinking, if any of you are familiar with the computer program SimCity, a specific plan is very much like playing SimCity, you know, just in the real world. It's, it's a, it's a generalized thing. You don't know which, what kind of business is going to occupy that, that retail space, but you know that it's a retail space. And you know that this is where the, the street's going to be aligned. It also, you know, some of the other elements are, where are the public utilities? Where, you know, where will the water lines go? What sizing, you know, how, how, you know, how to, it may, it can get to that level of anticipating what kind of public infrastructure will be necessary in order to support the intended, you know, intended intensity of development within the specific plan area. So it can cover a number, a whole wide range of, of information.
I don't know if this is the oldest specific plan, but it's certainly been around for a while, the property at the southwest corner of Garden and Yanana Lee, which was approved for a hotel. I know it was included in Measure E in 1989. Are there any that are older than that?
Right, so that's the Cabrillo Plaza specific plan. There is one older, trivia. The, the Park Plaza specific plan is the oldest, the first specific plan in the city. And I don't have the date of when we adopted that, but Cabrillo Plaza specific plan, that area, Garden, Yanana Lee, Cabrillo area, was adopted in 1980, it looks like. So that's an example of one where we have a specific plan on the books. And no part of that has been developed out, it was, as it was originally envisioned. There's been many different iterations of what that owner may want to do with the property, but we haven't actually seen any of it come to fruition yet.
Is, is the smaller hotel, Fest Parker project, is that a specific plan also?
Yeah, that's part of the Park Plaza.
Oh, that's part of Park Plaza, okay.
That takes, that takes the entire current existing Fest Parker Hotel all the way to the park at Garden Street.
Okay. And there have been some rumblings that maybe something's going to happen on that one?
Yes, that's what, that's what Chair Schwartz was talking about, the Post Ranch Inn people are, seems like they're, at least they've been talking to the, the Parker family about partnering on a, on a smaller hotel there.
Oh, okay, that was Post, Post and Rail?
Post Ranch Inn.
Post Ranch Inn, Post and Rail was a?
Also, they also own the Cavalo, I think it's called the Cavalo Point or something like that.
Yes, they do.
Field Fort Baker in, in Marin County, just, just at Sausalito.
I don't know if June was involved or up to speed. I think everybody else was in the East Beach Collection or the Los Portales specific plan that we worked on, and Scott and I collaborated quite a bit on that specific plan. But the goal there was to provide workforce housing and try to, as an experiment, if you will, that you could get the prices down and restrict it, the pricing and the appreciation. And to achieve that, the site was vacant, I think, which, and at a good price, which could possibly achieve that. And I think the, the changes that were made under the specific plan to accommodate that mission, if it could be done, was industrial zoning underlying, which didn't allow housing, traffic impact, non-mitigatable at Garden and Gutierrez. And then some guest parking, I think, and then also the density, because it was 27 units an acre without, without having to comply with the variable density program, which was based on bedrooms. These were primarily two and three bedrooms. But the underlying use for industrial remained as part of the specific plan. So if the project could not be financed to go forward, it was still a fallback that it could be used for industrial purposes. So I guess that was an example of trying to create a package by making a number of modifications to see if it would, would work, but only in a specific instance, which wouldn't be allowed for a number of reasons if it were just a market rate project without this goal, if it will. The other part too, I think Scott, if you recall, is phasing, which you mentioned, was a big issue of concern because of the number of units, 48. And normally, these infill-type projects, you would expect it to be built out all at once, but that's what the expectation was. So how do you prove that phasing it by various, various phases of house construction? How is the city going to be comfortable that the project would be completed once started? And discussions at that point really were, if you had to build them all at once, it probably wouldn't start because of the economic risk. But at the same time, you had to ensure to the city's satisfaction that if you put the infrastructure in and you just did one phase, that the rest of it wasn't going to be blown up, if you will, due to whatever conditions, and then you're stuck with a half-completed project. So those are, I think, were a couple of interesting components of that project, if I can recall, that we dealt on.
And what I would point out in that case is because, because that particular specific plan was adopted as an ordinance and was actually, you know, that it has equal dignity to the zoning ordinance. And so in that sense, the city council is going through the same formality as it would with a zoning ordinance amendment or adoption. And so it, it, the, the council as a package could, you know, went out of its way to exempt that, that area, that particular project, from several other standards that had been codified in other ordinances of the city. And since the specific plan was adopted as an ordinance, it had equal dignity and it to the other ordinances, and those exemptions could, could lie.
So that particular one is a, is an example of the opposite of what you'd normally think of as a specific plan, right? You know, in California, when you think of specific plan, you're normally thinking of, you know, a thousand houses on, you know, on 200 acres or something like that. And this is the, that's the zoomed-out version, this is the zoomed-in version that essentially was one parcel big, right? I mean, that, and we see those, I mean, if you look at the list, you know, in the city, we have, we have our version of the big one, and that would be something like Rancho Arroyo specific plan, where all the car dealerships are, right? That was a number of different, a number of different lots. It set out land uses such as auto dealerships, senior housing, you know, that sort of thing. And it affected quite a large area for, for city Santa Barbara standards. And then, you know, Los Portales, or even, you know, you'll be seeing hillside house sometime in the future. You know, and that, they're proposing a specific plan there, you know, because what they, basically what they propose doesn't meet underlying zoning, and they're trying to figure out some way to do it, similar to Los Portales. And even the Natural History Museum is starting to talk now about maybe doing a specific plan up there for two reasons. One, for the timing, because they see it as a 20-year project, and we don't have a, we don't have a mechanism to keep something alive that long. Even development agreements don't last that long. You know, where a specific plan is essentially a zone, so as long as you, as long as you develop in conformance to the zone, then, you know, each project has to get an entitlement. But the, kind of the baseline is set through the specific plan, you know. And another is, you know, potentially the height situation out there. So, you know, it gets, it goes from big to small in our city.
So when specific plans are adopted, are the associated impacts then, like traffic, are adopted along with them? In other words, they're already countered into certain intersections so that future projects coming along are coming on the heels of a project that never got built, and it claims that there's a traffic impact because this fictitious traffic has already been logged in? Is that?
Well, I'll maybe answer the first part of that, and then I'll look to Scott. But so, as I mentioned, so specific plans go through environmental review. If an EIR is adopted, then it's analyzed what was envisioned at the time, the, the full build out of the specific plan. And so you could, in subsequent actual development permits, be able to exempt those parts of building out the specific plan, assuming nothing has changed that would require some additional environmental review. And I'll, yeah, I'll defer to someone else to answer, if, if it's never built out, how are those past impacts looked at for future development in the, in the same region?
And those impacts would be potentially analyzed within a cumulative analysis. That, you know, what we're seeing in, particularly in traffic, is the, the current trend in SEQA analysis is actually to do multiple traffic analysis. In other words, you have the project-specific analysis, comparing the project against the environmental setting as it exists today. environmental setting as it exists today, and that's, you know, we're all familiar with that project-specific analysis. Then you have one kind of cumulative analysis. The typical way we've done cumulative analysis around here in the past is you take the current environmental setting, you take that, you know, the instant project, the subject project, and you take a set of reasonably likely projects, projects that are already in the process, projects that have been recently approved and are likely to get built. So that's, there's, that's one scope of a cumulative analysis. We now have with the general plan EIR, a long-range cumulative analysis. It assumed 1.35, actually even more, 1.85 million square feet of new, net new, non-residential growth. That, that what I would say as, obviously, is the long view. That's, and, and there's no guarantee that any of that gets built, you know, specifically. So, but it does serve as, throughout, through a SEQA process, to inform decision-makers about each individual project. Where does this project fit into that puzzle that we may not have all the pieces because our kids lost them or something? I don't know. At least that's what happens in my house. The, and so we've, that's, so the Cabrillo specific plan, it's been out there. I don't know exactly how we've been treating it as far as, like, I'd be interested in seeing the, the SEQA analysis for the Yanin Ali condos. How did, how did we handle the Cabrillo specific plan when analyzing the Yanin Ali condos?
Good question.
I mean, so I don't know how we've, how we've handled these, where we have a use. Another example would be, what do we do with Veronica Meadows now that it's out there as a specific plan when we're analyzing Hillside House? So it, I mean, we have to, we have to do these things, and when we make the decisions, we have to justify them. And so I could see, I could easily see where maybe if we were doing, we probably included Veronica Meadows in the SEQA analysis for Vialverde.
And for Hillside House.
And for Hillside House previously, but I don't know how much longer that, that makes a whole lot of sense when that project's fairly more bun, but we'll see.
But if somebody follows what was outlined and approved in the specific plan 30 years after it was adopted, can, can that project be denied because of traffic or something like that? I thought that was already taken into account when it was originally approved.
I, I think, okay, let me try this. I think this is different than like a vesting tentative map, right? A specific plan, it, I mean, we treat it like a zone. It allows you to do certain things, but it doesn't, it doesn't entitle it for you unless you, unless, like some of these other projects, the entitlement came with the specific plan. If, if that entitlement drops away, and all there is is a specific plan, that, the next developer is allowed to try to get something developed, given the parameters of the specific plan, and it has to go through a separate process. Depending on how long it's been and what the environmental document is, there might be possible to tear off an old, an old EIR, you know, to, to update it, to show the existing conditions, you know, that's, that's a possibility. But it's, it has to stand on its own. You don't, it doesn't, the specific plan doesn't entitle it.
Lot of pre-allocation, then.
Correct.
No, and, and I would, I would bring the specific plan example back to the, to the zoning analogy. You might own an M1-zoned parcel, but you're not entitled to, yet to build anything. You have to propose your project, you know, it has to be consistent with that zoning. So let's move to, back to the specific plan. You have a, you have a piece, a parcel of land within a specific plan. Specific plans around here have been generally one, one property owner, one project, you know, but a specific plan could, whichever Arroyo-
Arroyo, Rancho Arroyo.
Rancho Arroyo, probably had multiple property owners. Each one of them bringing their, you know, their project forward at a, on their pace and at their time. They had to comply with the applicable standards within the specific zone, in a specific plan. But until they proposed that project, had their project processed through to entitlement and then actually constructed, they didn't have, you know, an entitled, a vested right to any particular use. They had to comply with the terms of the specific plan, but they didn't have an entitled project.
Yeah, to follow up on that, that example, Rancho Arroyo specific plan, that's the car dealerships on Hope and Hitchcock. There's one piece left of that specific plan. It's the vacant lot that Big Wave Dave's Christmas tree lot is on, on Hope, that little triangle piece. That's the last remaining vacant piece of the Rancho Arroyo specific plan. And we've been in conversations with, with some people that want to develop that, but not as a use that's allowed in the specific plan, right? The only use that's allowed in, on that piece by the specific plan is auto dealership. And these people don't want to put auto dealership on, they want to put on something else. And that needs a specific plan amendment in order to go forward with that, right? And so that's, that's, that's the process.
I just wanted to add that in terms of the, the impact reviews, my experiences were just similar as Danny described. You have to go back to the original purpose of, of SEQA, which is full disclosure, full and adequate disclosure. And specific plans do tend to get a higher level of specificity in their environmental documents, simply because you know more about what you're going to expect than, say, on a citywide general plan amendment. But that being said, if years go by, there are baseline conditions that change. And if those changes are substantial, and often when a project comes in, particularly if it isn't coming in at the same time as a specific plan, even if it does, it, most often there are some changes to that project. It doesn't always work out exactly as initially envisioned. And so then those changes to the plan itself then might trigger some new review, or a new issue area might arise that you didn't fully understand, or like requirements for greenhouse gas emissions maybe didn't exist when you first did your impact review. All those things can cause a need to tier or update a new project as it comes in, right?
Yeah, that's true. And to just follow along, a situation that we're, we're trying to, we're trying to think about now, for example, the Waterfront Hotel. It's an entitled 150-room hotel. They want to come in for a smaller hotel. And since it's, I mean, it's a revision to an existing project, but we need to do some environmental review on that, right? And it's complicated a little bit by the fact that as part of the hotel's specific plan, you know, they've already pre-mitigated. They, they paid for part of this, the Salsi Puentes, Caixas Chavez extension down to Cabrillo. They paid for part of the Garden Street extension. You know, at the time when we did that EIR, the, the Garden, the Garden interchange didn't exist yet. So, so tearing off that old, you know, the old EIR is a little bit difficult. So we're looking at, you know, how, how do they get credit for this, the money that they've already put towards mitigating their impacts, you know?
And what about the, the youth hostel? Which seems it's been back before us a couple of times, and-
They've pulled permits there, there, I don't think they've actually started working on inside yet, but it's close.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because the last time I came by, there, there didn't seem to be anything happening.
Yeah.
But they will have to do that, complete that before they actually start?
No, before they complete the Waterfront Hotel.
Before they complete the Waterfront Hotel. They will have had to complete this.
Yes, and, and that will, I mean, I think that'll happen.
Oh, last half.
Question, question I was thinking about while Danny was talking, for example, with non-residential growth, a project-specific impact for economic development downtown, there's alternatives where that could get approved, and one would be, I think, listening to Mr. Dayton, would be that they could try to alleviate somehow their project-specific impacts, either by downsizing the project or making some type of contribution to traffic improvement, if I recall some of the alternatives that the project would have. So if a project was conditioned upon that type of mitigation and then sat on the shelf and didn't go forward, would the gross traffic that that was going to produce be considered in cumulative impacts? Or would the fact that it was mitigated take it out of a calculation when you're looking at a new project that would also be coming online?
I would say that depends on exactly how it went down, right? If, if the mitigation was actually paid upfront, like it was for the Waterfront Hotel, you know, I think we have to take that into consideration. If it was simply a condition that in order to move forward, you had to pay this mitigation or do this mitigation, and the project never went forward, and the project was, the mitigation never happened, then in that case, we would treat it as if, I mean, we, they don't, no one gets credit for that mitigation that didn't happen.
Remember that the, the environmental setting is normally what the, the existing world at the time of notice of preparation. So if the mitigation measures were to put in a freeway interchange, to extend Garden Street to Cabrillo, to alter or add in new traffic lights, and all of those were done, that would all have, that would be part of the environmental setting at the time of the notice of preparation. That would inform and affect the, the baseline against which the project would be analyzed on a project-specific basis. Now, on a cumulative basis, you would consider that approved but not yet developed project until its entitlements lapse, because it's out there. It, it could be developed, but it, again, it's, it's a matter of determining the likelihood of it happening. The, it's, you have to decide what is the, you know, how, how broadly do you capture what kind of projects should be included in that cumulative analysis? That's both, I would, I would say that that's, there are several different elements to it. One is geographical relationship. You don't necessarily include a project that's all the way across town in certain analyses for a project on the other side of town. They, they just don't relate to one another necessarily. Whereas also, if, if a project is conceptual but hasn't come into the process, you have to decide, you have to start deciding, how likely is that project to being, ever coming into fruition? And then on the other side of, well, we've had these entitled projects, but we're, are we going to see them? You know, and there's, there are probably a few projects we could think of, they're entitled, but they're not going to get built. And so at some point, we have to start being realistic about, do we keep including those in cumulative analysis even though we know that just the world has moved on and those aren't going to work?
Scott, just a question. And let's say if a project was just, it's a year old and it didn't start yet, it's, you know, it might be likely financing is holding it up or something. In the cumulative analysis, if that traffic is, would be on the side of likely and should be included, and they had a condition to mitigate their traffic impact, so it's not likelihood anymore, it's, there's a way to mitigate it, the gross traffic would still be included in cumulative without the idea that that impact would be offset when you're looking at another project that might be impacted by it?
Well, I think if you're counting, if you're, if you're going to count the project as being part of a cumulative analysis, I'd say you count all of the, its negative attributes as well as its positive attributes. So if you're going to count, if you're considering that project as a likely project, and it's going to add traffic, but it also has certain mitigations associated with it, then I would, I would say you have to count both the pluses and the minuses in your cumulative analysis. You can't assume that the project's going to get built, but the, but the mitigations aren't going to come online either, because the mitigations are supposedly built into the project. The project will not occur unless the mitigations also come along with it.
Yeah, and I think it was just in my mind, because prior to the new non-residential growth, it maybe didn't matter, there was no real way to mitigate a class-one impact for traffic for a non-residential use. And so now, projects, there may be more projects coming up that actually take advantage of the ability to mitigate it, because at least that's, that's available, according to Rob Gait's presentation.
Yeah, and I would caution that, or, or go a step further in the explanation that Mr. Dayton was providing, is that if a project downsizes, or if the project mitigates, you no longer have a class-one impact. A class-one impact is a significant unmitigated adverse impact. And if you, if you're talking about mitigation, and that means that it's been mitigated to less than significant. So when, when Mr. Dayton's talking about a project that, that reduces its size or somehow otherwise mitigates its impact, and in particular, traffic, he's talking about a project that has a class-two impact. It was potentially significant but mitigable. And so therefore, you're, you're not in the overriding considerations, you don't have an unmitigated, significant adverse impact, it's been, it's a mitigated impact.
Danny and Renee, I wanted to go back to the Waterfront Hotel as an example. I have a couple of questions from my own education. So Renee said that the specific plans are defined as a project under SEQA, right? So when the Waterfront Hotel project was approved, I have two questions. Number one, certain environmental assumptions were made. Analysis was done, certain environmental assumptions. Ratchet forward any, any number of years where we are now, with some new owners, combination of new owners coming in, with a new project, a different project to be proposed, does kind of a wholesale new environmental analysis get triggered? Number of things could have happened to that land itself, you know, let alone anything else, biologic, cultural, whatever.
Well, I wouldn't quite say wholesale, but yeah, we do have to look at it, we have to look at it again. Like, the 150-room entitled hotel can move forward, right? It already had its environmental review. I mean, it's 1993 or whatever, but it did have its environmental review, it's, it's entitled.
But if that specific plan were taken off the shelf, that's one thing, but if they want to change it-
Okay, remember, there's, there's a couple of different things going on, because there's the specific plan, which, which is like a zone, which was put in place that says you can have a hotel, and you can have a park, and that sort of thing. And then there's the entitlement of the hotel itself, right? So the specific plan doesn't go away, the specific plan's still there, and the specific plan still allows a hotel, right? So there's no change to the specific plan necessary, but because the entitlement, the coastal development permit and the development agreement and all that stuff, that, that, they want to change that from 150 rooms to whatever, some smaller number. We have, we do have to look at, we do have to look at the new project, you know, and we look at it, it's a little bit difficult, because you look at it in relation to what's on the ground now, but you also look at it in relation to what was approved, right? It makes the baseline analysis a little bit tricky.
Yeah.
So, but, but that's part of the environmental analysis that we would do. We'd look at, what's, what's different between zero, right, vacant lot, and this new smaller hotel? And then also, well, it also does have an entitlement for 150 rooms, so, so it's, I'm not sure exactly where it's landing just yet, but, but you do have to look at it.
I guess I wouldn't understand, you know, just because, for example, the number of keys, which is what they call rooms, you know, the number of keys changes. Many other aspects regarding use could change separate from the number of, the change to the number of keys.
No, understood. We look at all, we look at the-
Different types of clientele and activities on the property, and who knows?
Correct. We look at, we look at the entirety of what the project is when, when, for the, for the revised project. We would look at all-
Related to that, my, I'm sorry, were you going to say something else? So then, related to that, my question is, so when there's a mitigation that's been determined as required and agreed to, the hostel, the travel hostel?
Yeah.
But if, on a separate parcel, when that, when that ownership changes hands, though it's no longer owned by the original applicant, which is now going to be the case with the hostel?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
What's the legal relationship then between the new owner of that parcel that was going, that was a mitigation to the specific plan and the Waterfront Hotel, when the original applicant no longer owns that parcel?
I don't think, okay, this, this one will depend exactly on how the condition was written and what was required in the agreements and such, but, but in general, as long as, you know, I don't think that there's necessarily needs to be a tie between the ownership, as long as there is a hostel.
The condition, the condition of approval required the construction of a hostel and the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the hostel prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the Waterfront Hotel. That's the condition. So if that condition is satisfied, they can-
Regardless of the ownership of that parcel, right?
That parcel can be sold, and it, it's-
If the new owner somehow comes back to the city to change the use, then we have an issue since that was a condition, it was a mitigation condition, right?
Well, I could see where that would be argued up and down. I mean, because they, the, I would say in first blush, the applicant would be, you know, the applicant of the Waterfront Hotel, one, they will have had, they'll have their Waterfront Hotel already. Remember, the certificate of occupancy for the, you know, for the hostel, they're not going to open that until they're sure that they have vested rights for their hotel. And so, you know, they're going to have vested rights for a Waterfront- And so, you know, they're going to have vested rights for a Waterfront Hotel. We, and then, we have a hostel. Now, just economic reality would probably have the hostel continue, since it's built, it's there. It, you know, it's not particularly economic to scrape the ground and start over again. And I doubt that that would engender great feelings of, amongst decision-makers on any redevelopment project. So, I, I, I mean, I think the hostel's going to be there. Was that condition as bulletproof as it could be? I probably would have kept the, the two parcels tied together. That comes back to an example within Veronica Meadows, and, and, and development restrictions in general. One of the other lessons that we have learned over the years, moving from dedications to the city, also, there'll be situations where the, where there are development restrictions, but you see, particularly in subdivisions, the developers proposing the, the open space as its own lot. And they say, oh, okay, that, it's, it's, that's its own lot. Well, I guarantee you that that lot will someday be owned by an entity, not an individual, and that entity will somehow be underfunded or not funded at all, will cease to exist, and its principles will have, will go off into the sunset. So if you ever see that on a subdivision, and I promise you, I, well, if I'm reviewing it prior to it, you won't, is that, is that those lots do not go into, and are not separated, but they become integral parts of the project, so that the property owners of the project are not able to slough off that, that parcel and just have it become an orphan, which is tantamount to making it our problem. Because sooner or later, that parcel, the, if that ownership, if that entity is not viable, the city's the next, the next place it goes. And so it, it becomes the city's problem, and that's the whole idea of, of learning the lessons of that if we're going to have property, it needs to be, you know, it needs to be owned and part of that viable project, not in a position where it gets separated off by itself.
So we're done with specific plans unless there's more discussion that, that any of you want? Well, let's move on, then. Next topic is zoning information reports, and Renee's going to do that one, too.
Okay. Since we have a little bit of limited time, I'll be really brief and then mostly just leave it for questions, because I believe you probably have a basic understanding of zoning information reports. But just by way of background, since 1976, the city has required zoning information reports for any change in title of residential property. So, and, and there's deadlines in the code that require that, let's see. It says that no later than five days after entering into an agreement of sale of any residential property, the owner or the representative shall apply for a zoning information report. And then, we are required to do our job, and I'll get into what we do as part of that, and return that zoning information report back to the seller. They are then required to give it to the buyer no later than three days prior to the consuma, consummation of the transfer of title. So all of this is supposed to happen while a property's in escrow. And the purpose of doing zoning information reports is to give the potential buyer a heads-up about what, what's going on on this property that they're about to buy. And so, zoning information reports have evolved over time in terms of their amount of detail in them. If you go back and look through street files from the 70s and 80s, it was pretty much just a checkbox on, you know, two-sided sheet that said, here's, there was a single-family house, there was two parking spaces, it's in this zone. Any special approvals were noted on there, like if there was a past modification granted or some special condition about future development of the property, that was noted on there. And then, any really obvious building or code violations were noted on zoning information reports. We didn't always have access to all of the records that we have today. So, moving forward to zoning information reports in more recent years, they're much more detailed. We have a lot more information available to us. So, our typical process now, what's involved is we get an application for a zoning information report. Right then and there, we make an appointment with the realtor to gain access to the property. Usually, it takes one to two weeks for us to be able to fit that in. In the meantime, we do some preliminary research. We check the street and planning files, we check the archive plans if we have them on record for the property, and then we go out to the site and inspect the site against what we've under, what we understand and should expect to see on the property. After that happens, we come back to the office and then we write the report. And we write, you know, what we saw on the property, what we know to be permitted based on our records, and then any discrepancies are noted in there as violations, or this isn't clear. Sometimes, we don't have old archive plans for certain properties, and we'll say that. We don't have any archive plans on file for this property, as best as we can tell. Everything looks to be pretty old, pretty original, so this is, this will sort of serve as the basis for what we understand, how this property was developed at the time. And going forward, that would be what we'd rely on. Um, let's see. So, then if we find violations, if we find unpermitted work, setback encroachments, any number of other things that might be building or zoning code violations, that we note that in the ZIR. And again, this is given to the buyer, so they realize, as part of this transaction, they're either buying a piece of property that, in the city's eyes, is completely clean, free of violations, and it gives them some, you know, confidence in what they're buying, or else, they might be really enlightened by what's in the report and think, I didn't know that that bathroom wasn't permitted. Wow, you know, this is news to me, and maybe I want to renegotiate things, or, or think twice about buying this property. So, we, we will see any number of violations, but the, and most of them just go into the zoning information report and go into the file and are, and are given to the buyer as, as a heads-up. And then, that's, that's it. Only in certain circumstances do we then start an enforcement case and actually start really working on getting abatement of these violations. And that's in three circumstances. One is if we find an illegal dwelling unit, someplace with an extra kitchen, basically anything that, that in our definition is an illegal dwelling unit, we'll send to automatic enforcement. Any other type of unpermitted habitable space, we will send directly to enforcement. So that might just be a bedroom addition. It's not its own unit, but it's habitable space, someone's living in this space, it's not permitted, it, we don't know if it's built to code, we don't know if it's safe to, for someone to be in there. We want that to go to enforcement and be corrected. And then also, anytime that the required parking for a property has been eliminated, that automatically goes to enforcement. And that could be because it's been turned into an illegal dwelling unit, or because it's been turned into an office, or it's full of stuff. The cars aren't able to park in there, it's just full of items. We have sent, just very recently, not, not automatically, we will start an enforcement case for the lack of required parking if a garage is full of stuff, but it's not something that we'll immediately act on. It's on record as a violation, but we have since been a little bit more relaxed in our immediate enforcement if it's just an accumulation of items in a garage. But the structural changes to a garage, you know, interior partitions, or someone living in a garage, we still will automatically enforce on that. Um, so I think I'll, I'll stop there and then just sort of leave for questions. Thank you for asking that, because I should have clarified. So it's done for every residential property prior to the transfer of title. The council did amend the ordinance about two or three years ago to make ZIRs optional for condominiums. And that was because, a number of reasons. It was a request by the Association of Realtors, but also, we understood, too, that, based on their request, that it wasn't too often we were finding major violations in condominium developments, because the homeowners' association is usually pretty good about policing itself. And so we would find little things here and there, but nothing that was really putting people in harm's way. So we made those optional. If people wanted to do, have a zoning information report done before they bought a condominium, they're certainly welcome to apply for that, and we'll go do it. It is.
Too casual. Yeah, is, is that, that's on the checklist of the title company, or escrow company that closed, to ask?
Correct. That is something that local title companies know should be involved in a real estate transaction in their closing documents.
I have a couple of questions, too, just to follow up on that, though. So if it's a type of property that doesn't require a ZIR, or it's optional, and you go to the title company, do you have to show them something that it wasn't required? Or do they know?
Do you mean, like, for a commercial property?
Say, a commercial property or a condo. Say it's one of those. And you don't do a zoning information report, you go to the title company and you have nothing to show to check, right?
I don't know what they might ask in those situations.
Have you ever, maybe get a, something from you saying it wasn't required, something from the city, something like that?
No, nothing comes to mind.
No, the title companies, I mean, we've been doing this locally since 1976, so the title companies know this requirement, and, and they knew, two years ago, when we did this amendment to not require for condos anymore, you know, because they're involved with the Association of Realtors?
Association of Realtors.
Yeah, so, so they're, they're well-known. You know, the problems that we get sometimes is where we have out-of-town escrow companies that don't know about the requirement, you know, or bank-owned properties, and they use their own escrow divisions in Illinois, you know, whatever, so.
I have a couple, a couple of questions. So, I think you charge for them, is that right? You charge a fee?
Correct, yeah.
And does that sustain the program? Does that cover the costs of the program?
Yeah. In fact, ZIRs are one, if not the only, function that the planning division performs where we do seek to be full cost recovery. And that's because it's a service performed for a private real estate transaction, so it's not subsidized like other activities that we do, you know, out of the general fund.
Good, that's good. Okay. And then, my last question is, for those items that you don't immediately open an enforcement case on, so the zoning information report is in the file, so obviously, there's record that there was some issue, and the owner can decide, I guess, sometimes, maybe the new owner negotiates, or whatever they do. But at what point, then, does the own, is the owner required to fix the problem when he comes in for a permit, for example, in the future, or?
Right, exactly. And that's noted in the fine print of the ZIR, that any violations that aren't directly sent to enforcement do go in the record. There obviously weren't, we note them in our own permit tracking system. So, the next time that that new owner comes in to apply for a building permit for any alterations, anything on the property, they are required to abate all the outstanding violations that still exist on that property that were noted in the ZIR.
There are a couple of exceptions to that, like health and safety permits. Like, if someone comes in for an electrical permit to, to upgrade their service or put a, a re-roof, we don't, we don't require all the violations to be, to be taking care of it for those. Just because-
Or a new water heater.
Right. We don't, we don't want to be, the city doesn't want to be in a position where it's like, oh, my water heater burst, and because you wouldn't, because you wouldn't give me a permit to replace it because I didn't, because I didn't, you know, take care of these zoning violations, and now, city, you're liable. Right?
Well, what was the date that you said they started doing ZIRs? Seventy-six or eighty-six?
Seventy-six.
For, for information, unless somebody's paying cash for condos, anybody who's sold a property with an association, usually, your lender would hand the property manager a three- or four-page checklist that they want to know about lawsuits, you know, underfunded reserves and things like that. So, there's a lot of information that's provided. If, if you're getting a loan to acquire, that would be due diligence for the acquiring party.
Because of our time constraint today, well, until I have to leave, at least 15 minutes, I, I don't want to kind of open up a conversation that we can't really have extensive interaction on, but I'm very interested in ZIRs and our discussions with the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors on their insights and suggested, considered changes to our practices. So, will, could that come to us at another time, when we have more time to hear more from you on that?
I think, and just for anyone who might not be familiar with what you're referring to, we have been, staff has been meeting with a ZIR task force group within the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors for a couple of years now. And so, and, and they have some suggested changes to our process, and, so we're trying to work that out amongst the parties involved, but I, and I don't know a specific time when we might have more information for you, but I think if it's appropriate at some point to share some of the ideas, we could certainly have that more open discussion. I, I do know that the Association of Realtors representatives would want to be involved in that discussion if we're going to have that with the Planning Commission. So it would probably take the form of, of a more, you know, public hearing if we were going to do that, because I wouldn't want to have that conversation without them being here to represent-
Well, I would, I would encourage that at this point. You know, I've, I, I know I myself have gotten, have received, as perhaps other planning commissioners have, maybe even council members, inquiries, concerns, frustrations, complaints, suggestions, et cetera. And with our community being real estate-intensive, you know, with us being quite built out and land prices being high, we're sort of in a fishbowl with, especially the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors, looking very closely at all that the city requires for real estate transactions, well, residential. And so, I, I don't want us to be out of the loop in terms of any suggested modifications to our policy and processes, you know, as they're percolating up through the conversations. I think, I'd like to see the Planning Commission be an integral element to the discussion at the right time. And after two years into the process, do we see that, that could come to us in the near future? In, in a public hearing with the Association of Realtors also, here in the room?
Honestly, I don't, I don't know. I mean, at this point, I'm thinking probably not. And, and here's the reason. As my, as I understand it, the Association has been lobbying council to get this on a council agenda. And in order for it to be put on a council agenda, they need two council people to, to ask to be put on an agenda. And they haven't got those, they haven't got those two people, two council members to put it on a council agenda. So, you know, essentially, to me, that means council doesn't want to hear it, and they want staff to take care of it. And, and so, you know, we're just going to leave it at that until we hear, you know, we'll still not leave it at that, but continue with, you know, what we try to do and bring something forward. If we do end up bringing something forward, it will be a zoning ordinance amendment, and the Planning Commission will be involved with, with that process, for sure.
Okay.
So I can't promise anything.
So, what is the, the basis that you compare a property to? Is it the codes and the zoning that were in place at the time the structure was built? Or is it comparing it to changes that have occurred since then, and if there's a future permit, you now have to bring all these things up to a new code?
Oh, wow. That's a good question. And I think, I hate to say it, but it's kind of a case-by-case basis, because we come to conclusions based on sometimes very little information. We do try, so if we're faced with a situation where we have very little records on a property, or it's, it's spotty records, and there's an improvement on the property we see now, and we don't have any records of permits for that improvement on the property, we'll do a number of things to try to sort of pinpoint what time period this improvement might have occurred. Look at aerial photos, sandborne map. We ask the property owner to request county tax assessor records, just to document, oh, there's, this house went from a three-bedroom to a four-bedroom in 1986. Okay, what were the rules in place in 1986? Okay, what were the rules in place in 1986? And usually we're looking at it from a zoning perspective at that point. So if it were in a setback or in an open yard where today it's not allowed, but we think it was probably built in the early 80s, then maybe it's okay, it's not a zoning violation. But we do want them to get the proper building permits to make sure it's built to code and inspected and documented for, you know, going forward. And that's where I think it's a case-by-case basis. I'm not entirely sure what code they'd compare that against. You know, if there's some compromise made, or if it's, well, this is a permit we're issuing in 2013, it needs to meet 2013 codes. Does that answer?
Sort of. I mean, if it, if something is fairly original, but is, I guess, legal non-conforming, does it point out all the nonconformities? Should somebody ever make a future improvement on the home, or no?
I'm not sure I understand. Do you?
Yeah, so you're saying, okay, let's say there's a house that was, that was built in 1950, and it had a single-car garage, and it was, the garage is, and the garage is on the setback, right? We didn't have a requirement for covered parking back then, but we look at it, but it's never sold since then, so the first ZIR we're doing is today, right? We compare what we see against what the last permitted, last permitted plans were. So we'd say, yeah, you have a single-car garage, and it's on the setback, and that's exactly how it was approved. So that's great. But we don't say, oh, by the way, you're non-conforming to current standards for parking. If you need to, you know, we don't like recite the whole zoning ordinance as it relates to all the non-conforming items. It's just, it's legal.
We do say in the ZIRs, there's a section that calls out non-conforming parts of the structure. So we will say the garage is non-conforming to setbacks, just to put the, you know, the potential owner on notice that the garage is legal, we view everything on the property as legal, but here's a heads up, that's in your interior setback, or your house is in your front yard, so you've got some special restrictions should you want to add to that or, you know, change a window out or something.
Aren't there some things such as required fire alarms, smoke detectors, and that kind of thing that, that would be acted on then? Or is that one of the requirements in there?
We do. We, we note in the zoning information reports if we, whether we do or don't see smoke or, yeah, smoke detectors in bedrooms and hallways. But if we note, no, there's no smoke detectors in this hallway, that again is just notification to the buyer. We don't, you know, as the city, follow up on that. I think it's just another disclosure that happens in a real estate transaction. We've been asked to do this on, you know, behalf of the fire department because we're in these homes, doing these inspections, so it's a convenient time to do it.
Do you use the zoning information reports that you've already issued on properties as a part of your investigation when you are in, say, in the future investigating a potential zoning violation? How much weight does that have? Say, there's a zoning information report from five years ago or something?
Looking to see how much time we have. No, I'll give you a quick answer. We do our investigation through the normal process like I laid out before, researching the records, doing the site inspection and writing the report. We do, as part of that record research, you know, we'll often see past zoning information reports that are in varied degrees of detail. We will take some extra critical time to think about how we'll write up this current ZIR in front of us if we see something conflicting in the record. It can also enlighten because there's times where we might not have particular record in the file for some improvement, but it's been noted in several ZIRs as existing on the property. So we'll, you know, usually assume, well, it's been noted several times, you know, so it's either, or sometimes there will be notes in there that so-and-so has determined that this is non-conforming, and it can remain, or it's been recognized as legal. So they can help fill in the gaps if we feel unclear about some part of what we see, if there's a discrepancy between the record and what we see on the property.
Basically be superseded by your newest one, sort of, right?
Correct, right.
I think we're done with ZIRs, and since there's only five minutes left, I don't think we should start a new topic. But I, but Renee, you have my email. I did want to, there were a couple of topics that I had from before that I didn't, I didn't have a lot to go on, you know, and some of these probably came from John Jostis, and he had, had some topics that I'm kind of scratching my head. So if you, could I just talk about them and see if you have any, any thoughts and either drop them off the list or give me some, some specifics that I could come back with?
Also, Danny, may I just ask?
Yeah.
Only since I'm the only one that has to leave in five minutes, would it be appropriate to just, for me to excuse myself if the commission and you want to continue on, or?
No.
Since it's just audio tape?
No, I mean, you know.
Then we will conclude in almost now four minutes. Okay, thank you.
Right, I think it's best. You know, I, we, we plan these for when the, when the entire commission can be here. You know, Mike Jordan called in six, so he couldn't be here, and it was kind of too late to reschedule it. So, so I'd rather have as many of you here as possible. And since we did the bulk of what I was talking about, let's just, let's just leave it at that and go home early. But I had mitigation monitoring, lessons learned, I had green incentives, and I had making motions. And then mitigation banking, which was, I was, if we had time, I would have talked about it today, but it's something we don't do here, we have very, very little experience with. So if you really want me to, you know, we'd talk about that.
What was that last one again?
Mitigation banking.
Mitigation?
Banking.
Banking.
Like future, like, like pay, yeah, I don't want to get into it, but yeah, something, it's, but yeah, sort of like paying into something so that, so that you can take care of it, so you can take advantage of it later, right? It's, like I said, we don't know much about this, we don't do it much, maybe more in the county. But anyway, mitigation monitoring, making motions, green incentives, those sound, anything new that, that are on your potential training list? I mean, we spent quite a bit of time talking about SEQA, so, you know, we might have a SEQA discussion, you know, in the next time. Anything, anything else?
I just want to mention, I think those, that's a really good list.
Okay.
But, but you, you need some guidance.
Did you want us to whittle down?
Guidance on green incentives? Do you think the intent was like built green if someone's building a quote-unquote green building?
Or does the city give incentives for green buildings? Or what, or do we want to, or what, what kind of, what kind of discussion you want to have on that topic?
I may have raised that. I don't know that John did, or maybe I carried on for John in that regard. I think it came out of one or two projects we've had where we went back and forth on the green design elements that were suggested but couldn't be required and, you know, as conditioned as part of the project approval.
Like the solar carpports at Foothill?
Yeah, and maybe it was the Foothill Center project that most recently triggered the discussion. I don't know, maybe Bruce, who's lead certified, can talk, address this.
I thought green incentives would be explaining how it benefits the project and an applicant is, you know, maybe expedited processing or those kinds, to understand the linkages.
Okay, well, I mean, yeah, that's a short one, but.
Well, let's keep that on the list, maybe we can flesh it out.
No examples come to mind, you mean?
We could, yeah.
Maybe, maybe on that point, like the solar, is there maybe items that are, let's say, if you're approving a modification and you want to determine some other conditions on the particular request, are there requests that are related that are okay? Or, you know, are there, then judging requests that maybe are not okay? It's not fair to insert those to the applicant? Or, you know, some type, would that be helpful, some type of determination on what you can ask for?
Yeah, that's getting to a little bit more into the exactions discussion, but, but we can, I mean, this will be a free-ranging topic, and we'll be able to talk about a variety of different things as we, as we talk about this. So, okay, great. No other topics you want me to put on the list? You can always email Renee.
Thank you. So that, that adjourns our meeting for today.
Yay, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.